Thank you very much, Bob. Thank you, everyone, and welcome to the Zoning Board of Appeals for tonight's meeting, August 28, 2019. It is 6:30 PM at the Multi Service Center, Room 320. I want to call the meeting to order. I make a roll call. My far right, Mr. Robert Haskell. Veronica DeBeneese, our clerk, Jim Akbachi. My far left, Jake Morrison, Attorney General Kendrick, and town planner, Cam Buckland, myself, the chair, Nazir Al Qalasi. We have some preliminary business to do. We get the minutes. So I wasn't here that day, so you guys...
That's all. I reviewed them online.
So you call your...
The people make a motion to approve as presented.
Do I have a second on the minutes for August 14?
Second.
Second by Bob Holden. Favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, abstain, carries. What's going over here before us tonight? Or last week?
No, that was previous.
Ah, okay. All right. Public hearings, we're gonna start with 31-19, Joseph LeBlanc, 18 Fourth Street, special permit. Mr. LeBlanc's here. Come forward, please. Just have a seat. Let us read the notice.
Second story of that kind of...
These could be passed over. Yep, here's two. Here's the... I need the folder. There you go. Thank you. The zoning board of appeals will hold a public hearing on August 28, 2019, at 6:30 PM in Room 320 of the Wareham Multi Service Center, 48 Marion Road, Wareham, Mass., 02571. To consider petition numbered 31-19 for a special permit slash variance from the requirements of Article 13, Section 1352...
Say it, Bob.
...of the Wareham zoning bylaws to Joseph LeBlanc, 18 Fourth Street, seeking to alter and expand his pre-existing non-conforming structure located at 18 Fourth Street, Wareham, Mass., that appears on Assessors Map 1 lot 651 in the Onset Village 2 zoning district.
All right. Just state your name and address for the record and let us know what you're doing.
Joseph LeBlanc.
Yep.
18 Fourth Street, Onset, Mass.
I just...
I'm looking to improve my residence by taking the roof off of the house and expanding the second floor, putting two new bedrooms in and a bathroom. So it's increasing the square footage of the house, but it isn't increasing the footprint of the house at all.
Okay.
All the decks would remain the same and the outside of the house would remain the same. We're just gonna put new siding, new windows.
Is it increasing the height?
We're increasing the height of the front of the house.
By how much?
By...
One story. One story.
Yeah. It's not... It already does have a second floor. The house itself has a second floor, but it's not the whole part of the house. Just the back part of the house has a second floor. Now the front part will have a second floor also. That's where the additional square footage will come from.
The height of the new addition can be flush with the same level as...
No, it's probably gonna be probably about eight feet higher than the original roof because it's gonna have a more traditional roof on it than the flat roof that's there now.
Okay. So the entirety of the second floor will be increased by that eight feet?
Yes.
In height, I should say.
Okay. Bob, you have a question?
None.
Veronica.
Nope, they were answered.
If I could...
Jake, go ahead.
If I could add, there was a... I do have my... The guy that did the survey on my property mentioned that there was a neighbor over on West Central Street that had a special permit granted to him that was very much similar to what I'm having done on my house.
All right, very good.
I have a copy of that.
Jake, you have a question?
No questions.
Jen.
I asked mine.
Jen, any input?
No.
Anyone in the audience want to speak in favor of this project? In favor, here and none. In favor, sir?
Yes.
Just come state your name, please, for the record, and address.
Yeah, my name is David Evans. I'm directly behind Joe's house on 13 Third Street, and I think this is a very well-done, thought-out addition. Basically, he's gonna put a real, normal roof on it with a gable and not this strange flat roof that's here now. And he's also not building the thing out to the envelope like some other houses down at Shaw Point have done, but the front of the house is actually still gonna have some shape to it. And not that I'll see the front, but I think it'd be a lot better than it is now for us who look at it and for Joe and his family to be in it. And as he's pointed out, the footprint's not changing. The roof is only going higher because it's a normal peaked roof, so...
And where are you in relation to, Mr. LeBlanc?
Right behind Joe's. Our backyards are about...
Okay. So he's... So you're just a bit farther away, one house farther away from the water? Am I reading...
Well, no. Actually, we're both about the same distance from the water.
Oh, I see. I got you.
Yeah, yeah.
I got you.
We're on Third Street.
I see. Yep.
So both of us will get waterfront views in about the same number of years in the future.
There's nothing to sign.
You go to the office.
Yeah.
All right. So you're in favor?
Yes.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Anyone want to speak against? Okay, here and none. So first, we're gonna... If the board don't feel this is detrimental to the neighborhood, we're gonna vote it as a special permit. If the board feel otherwise, it's a variance, then we go forward. So what's the board's wishes?
I feel as though it's not a detriment to the neighborhood.
I agree.
Okay, so she has a second. All in favor for a special permit, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, abstain. Now, what's the wishes?
I make a motion to approve as presented.
With standard conditions?
Standard conditions.
Okay. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Veronica. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, abstain. It carries. Thank you. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
We'll sign the...
If that was too hard, we can go back and make it harder.
No.
Go to the office and sign it because we don't have the paper.
No complaints, sir.
Oh, that was signed, yeah?
Yeah.
Okay. We'll sign it tonight, but it takes 20 days for appeal period.
Okay.
All right? Very good.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome. Next one.
Now I just have to deal with my wife, right? Get it done.
It's your problem. Yes, dear. That's all you need to know.
32-19, Brownies Liquor, 189 Marion Road.
Do you want to give them stuff?
Thank you.
Want to give the plans back to you or...
So what you need to do? I'm making these for you.
Not been right in yet?
Nope.
Okay. Zoning Board of Appeals will hold a public hearing on August 28, 2019, at 6:30 PM in Room 320 of the Wareham Multi Service Center, 48 Marion Road, Wareham, Mass., 02571. To consider petition numbered 32-19 for a special permit for a change of use under Article 1460 or a variance under Article 1471 Wareham zoning bylaws. Article 3, Section 320, to Murat Tascan-Matten...
Tascan-Nathan, that's correct. Yes, sir.
Murderer?
Murat. It's Murat, yeah.
Okay. Murat, sorry.
That's correct, sir. Yes.
743 Main Street, Winchester, Mass., seeking to change the use of the building to add a pizza shop located at 189 Marion Road, Wareham, Mass. That appears on Assessors Map 60 lot B in the MR30 zoning district.
All right. Just state your name and address for the records, please.
Sure. It's Murat Tascan-Nathan, 743 Main Street, Winchester, Massachusetts.
Hello. My name is Attorney Edward Conroy, here on behalf of the owners of the building, which is 189 Marion Road LLC, and the three owners of that LLC are behind Mr. and Mrs. Johar and their son, Amit.
Okay. So he's gonna be a tenant or he's the owner of the building?
These three folks are the owners. He would be the prospective tenant.
The prospective tenant. All right. And you guys have an agreement or some kind of...
Yes.
...agreements?
So...
Kind of PNS or whatever you call it, or intent, letter of intent?
So what we have is, right now, the use of the property was allowed by a variance, a use variance bank...
I understand, counsel, but he does have a letter of intent?
We have a letter of intent to do a tenant arrangement.
That's all we need.
Yes. And Domino's has agreed to the location.
Okay, very good. Now you could state your case. Go ahead.
Okay. So I have a number... A couple of handouts that relate to the 2011 petition. I was wondering if I could approach the... And distribute these, if that's okay?
Sure. You only have five?
That's why I remember that very well. I don't need to...
Let them have them.
All right. So the first, what I have attached is that back in 2011, there was a use variance granted. I had highlighted on the second page of the decision that it was granted for a use in commercial building. And then the second handout was the plan that was submitted back in 2011 that always showed that the principal use was going to be the Browns Liquor Store, and there was always gonna be a... The idea was to have a rental on the right-hand side. If you look at the plans, there was two back in 2011. They had put in two restrooms for the future tenant, and we were always looking to get a tenant in there, obviously. That's why we put in the two bathrooms. And unfortunately, since 2011, we weren't able to find a tenant until right now. And so now we have a...
Interrupt you for one second.
Sure.
The structure is built, and there's a portion of it that's been vacant since it was built?
So what happened is the structure has been 100% built, and it was allocated as it is now. And always, there was the side structure was going to be subdivided, but since we couldn't find a tenant, we used... The liquor store used it for storage.
Okay.
So now what we have is we're going to hopefully, if the zone will grant this, allow to use that right-hand side. And so we do appreciate your time tonight.
Let me ask you a quick question. Why are you asking for a variance?
Well, the idea here is that when I look, the... It's in the MR30 zone, and since it's in the MR30 zone, we were approved as a commercial use. And so we... I believe that the petition, the original petition, was rejected because it was a change of use. When I look at the actual decision, the decision specifically allows for commercial use.
Right.
Didn't delegate between whether it be a liquor store, retail use under defined of the commercial district, or a retail. This Domino's is going to be just a takeout. So this is just an extension of that use. I... I'm on the zoning board in Plymouth for the last 10 years, and we... I would've thought that this would just be a continued use under commercial use, but it was rejected, and so that's why we're here.
Okay. Fair enough. Go ahead. You still have something to do?
Sure. So what I've also... Usually what I like to do is give you what the sign will look like at the Domino's. So in the packet, we have the current photo and then how the Domino's will be on the right-hand side. I've included that in the package. Also, I put on what the sign will look out in front. And then this has been... Obviously, we're not doing anything different from Domino's in the past, so I've also enclosed what it's going to look down the road, what this will be. So I don't believe that we're... There's a Dunkin' Donuts next door, so I think we're within the... We're not derogating from the intent of the prior variance. I don't believe that... I think this is fine within that zone because of what was allowed in the past.
Okay. Is the sign confirming with the bylaws?
My understanding through Domino's that, yes, it was.
Okay. Well, I'm sure the building commissioner would reject that.
And say we go to put up a sign, the building inspector would tell us right away that if it didn't...
All right. Just proceed. Okay.
So the... And that's about it. The fact of the matter is, is that we're just trying... The total square footage of the location is 6,080, and that the proposed use is going to... Just for... And the current use is going to continue. When the variance was authorized back in 2011, we were always gonna have a liquor store there. That's going to continue, so we're not changing that. So the primary use is going to continue. Just we're going to... We finally were able to obtain a tenant, and from the very beginning, if you look at the plans from 2011, we wanted a tenant in there from the very beginning.
Okay, very well. Just gonna pass it to the board. Robert, you have a question?
Under the R130, it states that a restaurant and a restaurant drive-through is not allowed.
It's R30, Bob.
MR30?
I'm looking at the wrong... I apologize. I'm looking at the wrong one.
It's still in MR30 is not allowed. However, there's a use variance from before. But your statement is right for MR30 as well. MR30 is not allowed as well. But did you understand what the council is trying to explain to us?
Yes.
That there's a use variance that was granted since 2011 and hasn't been abandoned. It's been in the use. It's not like the abandoned use. So it's already been a variance for commercial. However, when the variance was granted, it wasn't specified for just the liquor store. So it's a variance for the commercial use in general.
Okay, that was my... That was my next question.
Right. So whether it's a restaurant or a liquor store or appliance...
There's no timeframe on this at all?
It's already a variance.
There's no timeframe on this at all?
Once it's in... Now, if they say they closed the place and two years, they come back 25 months later, it's dead. So they will need a variance again, but it's been in the use. It was never abandoned.
Okay.
Okay?
Thank you.
You're welcome. Veronica.
So what are we voting on tonight?
It's a special permit. It's not a variance.
Okay.
I believe, unless the board feels otherwise. We'll feel the whole board. Bob, you think it's a special permit or a variance?
I think it's a... I think it's a variance.
Okay. That's fair enough. All right, Veronica.
My thought is it does fall under the variance that was issued previously, so...
Fall into what?
The variance that was issued previously.
Right. It's commercial.
Right.
She feels they're already there. They're variance.
Yeah, so you feel it's a special permit.
Okay. If that's the other...
I feel it's a special permit because the use is commercial. That's what matters, what's the use.
Right.
If it was an apartment building, now they're doing a commercial. And like, keep in mind, commercial, like I said, could be a restaurant, liquor store, Dunkin' Donuts, grocery stores. So it's been granted as a commercial use prior.
So I guess my only question is why does it need a special permit in addition to the variance that's granted?
Because they add another business to it.
I mean, you make a valid point, because that's what the building inspector sent them in here on. Right? Essentially.
Okay. I have no problem with that, I think.
Jimmy.
I concur. You got a variance, you need a special permit.
Jake?
I'm good. I have no question at the time.
Jen?
I agree with the sentiments.
Jen, you have any input?
Yeah, you can't really do a variance of a variance.
Right.
You gotta...
Defeats itself.
Right.
Okay. Anyone in the audience want to speak against this project? I hear none. Anyone want to speak in favor? Okay. I hear none. Before we close, do you want to add anything, sir?
No, we just appreciate your time tonight.
Thank you very much. Okay.
Make a motion to close the hearing.
Do I have a second to close?
Second.
Second by general in favor, say aye.
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 Okay. What's the wishes?
Make a motion to grant a special permit and allow Domino's to sell pizza out of that location.
Any discussion on that?
Standard conditions apply.
Any discussion? None? Do I have a second on that?
Second.
Second by general in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, oppose, abstain. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Thanks for coming.
Everybody cast everything in on that so we don't get the files mixed up.
Well, he gave us this file, separate from 2011.
Yeah, just put it all together.
Everything to do with that.
You want this, too?
All together.
You want to take it home?
This is what he gave us after.
Closing the file.
Okay. I do not want it.
You got anything there from that one, Bob?
Yes, sir.
Get them all back.
I'm admitted.
Normally, ladies and gentlemen, normally, we sign these things, but there's a little bit of change in the way...
I think she went together.
Yeah, maybe... We might have them before the night's over. If not, we'll have to go in during the weekend.
All right. 33-19, Roxanne and Tim Raymond, 8 Crooked River Road.
Thank you. Here's some more from the last one. Every third one, we make very difficult.
Okay.
Oh, I'll cry.
She might.
I have to get the file to read it, so bear with us.
You getting warm? Hot flashes? Come with the age.
Yeah, it's a pain, yeah. You're not far behind.
Oh, I got all my hair.
All right. There you go. All right, Jimbo, all yours.
Okay, thank you. The zoning board of appeals will hold a public hearing on August 28, 2019, at 6:30 PM in Room 320 of the Wareham Multi Service Center, 48 Marion Road, Wareham, Massachusetts, 02571. To consider petition numbered 33-19 for a special permit under Section 1355 or a variance under Section 1356 of the Wareham zoning bylaws to Roxanne and Tim Raymond, 8 Crooked River Road, Wareham, Mass., seeking to demolish the residential structure and replace with a new foundation, non-conforming with front yard setback located at 8 Crooked River Road, Wareham, Mass. Excuse me. That appears on Assessors Map 37 lot 1020.
All right. Just state your name for the record.
Roxanne Raymond, owner of 8 Crooked River Road.
Tim Raymond, owner of 8 Crooked River Road.
All right. Let us know what you're doing.
We're gonna tear our house down and down to the... Take the foundation out and put in a new foundation in a modular home. Pretty much the same location, about eight feet further back, as that's the furthest we can go due to the septic system being right... This leaching field being right behind it.
Okay.
Did you say about eight feet further back?
Yep.
Okay. But otherwise, the footprint, is the same?
The side-to-side footprint is expanding, as should be indicated on one of those. I believe it's 12 feet further to one side.
I see.
It can only go in one direction because our septic tank is on the other side.
So I was able to look at this prior to the... The secretary was kind enough to email me a copy of what we got in front of us here, so I pre-reviewed it. I see the septic system in the middle of the lot. I see the house is going in front of the septic system.
Yes.
But I see quite a bit of space behind the septic system. Is that like sloping away, going into wetland, or what's the scoop back there?
No, it's just flat.
How did you elect not to put the house behind the septic?
Because it would pretty much kill our entire backyard. We'd be right... We'd be pretty close to the very back of the yard, and that just felt...
Yeah. It would make it so that almost all of our property was nothing but front yard.
You'd have all front yard and no backyard.
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay. Because to get the 20 feet from the leaching field, minimum, to put the house behind, we'd end up only having very little backyard on a 3/4 acre lot.
Which puts your lot closer to your neighbor's home as well, is that right?
It would put us back closer to our neighbor's property.
Yeah.
Yeah. A lot more.
Because as it stands now, there's...
I have a question.
Their house is kind of behind you, right?
Yes.
There's no structure immediately.
We have... We have a house on... If you're looking at the house from the street, we have a property on the left-hand side, which the owners of that are here.
Okay.
We have a agriculturally zoned property directly on the right of us...
Yep.
...which I don't believe they're represented here tonight. And we have a letter from the owners that are next to them on the right-hand side and their approval as well.
And they're closer to the road. They're not 60 feet back.
Yeah. That's part of the thing of we're going back as far as we can. Numerous houses on the property don't conform within the 60-foot setback either.
All right. Very good.
You're making him more compliant, though.
Yeah. We're getting as good as we can.
We're going as far as we can.
So it's more compliant than it was?
Yes. For a hundred and ten years.
Well, first of all, just to everyone know, this is an existing non-conforming, so they could extend the non-conformance. That's why they don't have to comply with the setback.
Okay.
And besides the story, this is a perfect example and a hardship for, for future reference, how the existing leaching, leaching field. So in this case, it's a special permit because existing non-conforming, but say it's not, this is the perfect example of a hardship because the leaching field is in the middle. So they can go back further and if they go in the back, it creates a hardship on the yard and stuff. So this is like topographic, like we all talk about topographic type of soil and shape of lot. That's a perfect example for a hardship, for future reference.
If I understand as well, actually, if we put the house into the back part of the property, we would still need a special permit because now we would have a dwelling, our garage, in front of our house.
Correct.
Right, right.
You need a variance.
A variance for that even.
So that, that is the perfect example for, for a hardship. But however, it's a special permit, it's not a variance. All right, we're gonna pass the question. Bob?
No, that was explained, thank you.
I'm looking at thirteen fifty.
Thirteen, yeah.
Which is what they're trying to get the special permit for. And I'm reading number three, thirteen sixty-one. "The non-conformance concerns the size of the lot in question or the frontage of the said lot. If the only non-conformity is the lot size and/or the frontage, the building permit may be allowed by right, provided that all of the aspects of the zoning bylaw exist." So...
However, they tear and replace and require automatically, not existing non-conforming requires a special permit. So they can't just tear it down, rebuild it on an existing non-conforming.
Is the foundation staying?
The lot confirmed.
Oh, the foundation's being removed as well?
It's all boulders.
Yeah, that's part of the problem with property.
If the lot conforms with they mentioned, footage, frontage, setback, everything, they wouldn't need to. But this lot is a non-conforming lot. If you are to go subdivided today, you'd not be allowed to do it. It's twenty-six thousand square feet, so frontage is fifty feet short. So that's why they need special permit. It's a non-conforming lot. Got that?
Nope.
All right, this lot...
I only say that because I'm, I'm reading, it says, "If the non-conformity is frontage, it's still..." It says, "It may be allowed by right." So I'm, I'm un...
It may be allowed by right.
I have no idea.
Through a special permit. Special permit is by right as well. Variance is not by right.
Okay, that makes it clear, yes.
But this lot, as you know, is supposed to be sixty thousand square feet, it's thirty-four. And the frontage one-eighty, so it's non-conforming lot.
Okay.
Jimmy?
I'm good.
Jake? Ponsel.
I've already asked my questions.
No questions.
All right, anyone in the audience want to speak in favor? This project? I hear none. Anyone against?
We do have a letter from one of our neighbors.
Yeah, let me finish. Anyone want to speak against? I hear none. So, okay, let's see.
This is, to whom it may concern, we are notified about...
Can you let us have it, so the clerk reads it for the record? Thank you.
It's a handwritten note. Then it says, "To whom it may concern," it's dated today's date. "We were notified about the changes that Roxanne and Tim Raymond are bringing to the zoning board of appeals tonight. We regret that we are unable to attend the meeting and wanted to voice our support for the improvements they are trying to make to their property. It will be a positive improvement for them and for our neighborhood." Thank you. Michael J. Patrick Capaccione, Twelve Crooked River Road.
Okay, very well. You want to add anything? Anything else you want to add?
We had two other neighbors.
Want to come forward? State your name and add us for record.
My name is Christian Tabaya. I'm from Five Crooked River Road.
All right.
I live across the street and I'm, I'm in favor of it. I think it'd be a nice addition to that end of the street.
All right, excellent. Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, here none. Let's move, let's move to close.
So moved.
Have a second? Second by Jake, all in favor say aye.
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 Oppose, abstain, what's the wishes?
Make a motion to approve the request with standard conditions.
For the special permit?
The special permit, correct.
Okay, any discussion on that? We hear none. What's, do I have a second?
Seconds.
Second. Bob, we have a full board, you can't second that. So when are you guys?
I'll second that.
Second by Jake, all in favor say aye.
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 Oppose, abstain, five-zero carries. Thank you, five-zero, you're good.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Okay, thirty-four dash nineteen Jeffrey Brenda Shrowski, Twelve Pine Tree Drive.
Want this stuff? Yeah. Sleeping over here.
Okay, I'm gonna recuse myself on this matter for some conflict with attorney Bello.
Let's get Eight Crooked River.
For the record, Bob Haskell was sat on my chair, Jim will, sorry, Bob Haskell was sat in my seat, will vote for my seat and Jim will run the public hearing.
Anything from Eight Crooked before you start on West Crooked? The decisions are coming. The decisions are coming, okay. I just want to get the folder filled for you before I...
Oh, here you go.
You guys got anything to put back in here, this last one?
Is Ray Ave here? Twenty-three Ray Ave?
Any of that?
No, they asked for an extension.
This is Crooked River, yeah? It's all Crooked River.
Crooked River. Anything down there from Crooked River? Get out.
This really should be pretty easy, but you never know.
People in the office don't like it when we put things in the wrong folder and then tell them, "Go ahead and find it."
No, that's one.
Guess where we put it.
Okay, I'm just looking for the front page on this.
Zoning Board of Appeals will hold a public hearing on August twenty-eighth, two thousand nineteen, at seven PM in room three-twenty of the Wareham Multi-Service Center, forty-eight Marion Road, Wareham, Mass, zero-two-five-seven-one, to consider petition number thirty-four dash nineteen for special permit from the requirements of section thirteen thirty-five of the Wareham zoning bylaws to Jeffrey J. and Brenda Swiz... Can't it be something easy like Akabachi? Krizowski. Care of GAF Engineering, Inc., two-sixty-six Main Street, Wareham, Mass, oh-two-five-seven-one. Seeking to reconstruct the existing dwelling to add a second floor, expand the garage and basement, and construct a twelve-foot by thirty-four-foot deck off the first floor located at Twelve Pine Tree Drive, Buzzers Bay, Mass, assessors map five, what, LC seven in the R forty-three zoning district. Wow, you're doing a lot of work. Go ahead.
All set?
Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening. Well, so we're, we're dealing with a single-family home located at Twelve Pine Tree Drive in Wareham. Any of you that are familiar with that area, it's probably one of the nicest in all of the town. They're the Butts, Butler's Cove. These are the houses that, that more or less surround the Cove. The property, while located in a residence forty-three zone, is a pre-existing, non-conforming piece of property. It's a home. It deals, the non-conformities deal with frontage and area. The existing dwelling is non-conforming, basically based on the front and side yard setbacks. The proposed expansion of the dwelling requires a special permit because it intensifies the current non-conformities. We are not increasing any of those non-conformities. We're not getting closer to a sideline, we're not getting closer to the frontage. So we're not increasing any of the non-conformities, although we are adding a second floor to a pre-existing, single-story home. However, however, in saying that, we also will point out that all the other homes in the area, except for one, are two-story homes. They're all fairly elaborate homes, not your median-priced homes. So what we're requesting is the special permit to conduct the work. The only expansion, if you would, is really the deck, which is coming off the front of the house. But it's not, it's not creating a non-conformity in terms of the frontage. But it is an expansion of what is there, not living space. The house itself remains to the present footprint.
It's an expansion of the structure. It's not in any way an expansion of any of the non-conformities, right?
Correct. And we have the engineer here, we have diagrams, we have pictures. I mean, it's, it's a pretty nice home. It's gonna be even nicer. As part of the submission, you have letters from the two director Butters, Twelve Pine Tree and Fourteen Pine Tree, both of whom are in favor.
We got ten and fourteen, am I right?
Ten and fourteen. Did I say something different?
It's all right, we got it right.
Okay.
I heard you correctly.
And I know at least one of the, the neighbors are, are present to support this. Mr. Krizowski took into account going to his neighbors ahead of time, showing them the plans, showing them the pictures of what he was gonna do. And they recognized that all this is gonna do is increase the values of their homes. And he's not gonna intrude on their views. So they're not losing waterfront views from the Cove. So we, we expect that we are only doing something positive for the neighborhood.
Through the attorney's comments in the folder here, I do see two letters, one from ten and one from fourteen. Dated and signed. One's Ten Pine Tree Lane, the other one's Fourteen Pine Tree Lane. This is the same side of the street, you're Butters on either side of you. And one of them uses the words, "We are writing this letter in support, blah, blah, blah." The other one also writes, "We feel proposed house would not obstruct and keyed on any way have a negative effect on our property or any other properties in the neighborhood. To the contrary, it would be a significant enhancement to their property and to the neighborhood," with a bunch of other blah, blah, blah.
It's all good blah, 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 though, right, Jim?
Yeah, I just wanted to get...
I just want to make sure we're not...
Good part out, just, you know, instead of, you know, so it's in the folder. And I see the letter from the building department stating Article Six, Table Six-twenty-one. "The proposed dwelling does not conform to any of the setback requirements," but you're not increasing any of that.
Correct.
Okay.
So...
That's a statement of fact. It's like, you know, the sun comes up in the east and rises and sets in the west. The second point he makes is, we have to decide if this is gonna be a variance or a special permit. Looking to the board, I think that's our, our task at hand is to say, "Do we feel that this is a variance? If we don't feel it's a variance, then we can turn and, and treat it as a special permit." Stand on that. Go there. Bob, do you have any questions?
No, not, not at this time.
No questions.
Jake? Jan?
No questions.
Anybody here in the audience that would like to get up and speak either in favor or against this project? Come on up, ma'am. State your name and address and whatever you'd like to say after that, within reason.
Thank you. Linda Reisner, Ten Pine Tree. I wrote one of this letters in support with the blah, blah, blah.
Yeah.
Still feel that we should blah, blah, blah.
Okay, thank you very much. You're here in support. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Linda.
So with that said, we, we gotta make a decision. Do we think that this needs a variance?
You're gonna close the hearing first?
I don't, but, okay. Would anybody like to make a motion to close the hearing?
I make a motion to close the hearing?
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
The hearing is closed. Somebody like to make a motion that we do or do not need a variance? Whether they think it's detrimental or non-detrimental to the neighborhood?
I, I would just make a motion to approve it as a special permit on grounds that it's not substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood. So my motion would be to...
That's fine, that works for me. Do I have a second on that?
That finding with standard conditions.
It's been motioned and it's been seconded that a special permit be granted. All in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? Passage unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm sorry we couldn't make it harder on you, but, you know...
You sort of moved through things tonight pretty well. This was very impressive.
Thank you.
Everybody deserves an easy one once in a while.
We got a couple of things that, that came in. Everybody have everything from that one?
You have to continue the hearing as well.
There's a couple of contingents that we need to get into the record and there's a letter here from somebody that I'm just gonna turn over to Mr. Buckland.
Who, who wants to continue?
Coastal Cultivators.
We have a letter from Rowley regarding Coastal Cultivators. We have, I think everybody got a copy of that in their folder. Anthony Grasso wants to continue. He called me and asked me to express to the board, he knows this has been going on for a long time. But our consultant, Charles Rowley, has asked for plans to be drawn regarding the landscaping and because it's such a small project, he's having a very hard time getting somebody to do the landscape work and it's gonna take him another month or two to get it done. So he's extended it out to November fifteenth.
Do I have a motion for that?
So moved.
Do I have a second to continue? One Ray Ave. And that is, what's the...
And he wants it until November fifteenth.
Right. It is petition twenty-three dash eighteen.
Twenty-three, yeah.
Till November thirteen.
Okay.
And second by Jake, all in favor say aye.
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 Oppose, abstain. Okay, so that's...
We also got one address to Mr. Buckland from Tesla Supercharger Development. Sometime back, February fourteenth, two thousand eighteen, we granted them permission to put a Tesla Motors supercharger at twenty-four, twenty-one Cranberry Highway. They've been unable to proceed with construction as planned, but are now resolved to get it done. They're asking for a six-month extension.
Okay.
I don't have any objection to that.
You have no objection?
I don't.
So you motion to grant?
I would make a motion to grant their request for a six-month extension.
Okay. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Jake, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay, so, so just write under six months initially. Oh, he got it. Okay, what's that for cultivators?
Coastal cultivators, they have a, they request for an extension of time.
Did they come before us or they have never? Was that a public...
Getting the letter.
No, was that a public hearing, open?
I thought you opened a public hearing, yes.
Remember we talked about the facade and all that jazz and...
No, that's a different one.
No, 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 that was a dispensary. This is different.
This is the end of Patterson's.
This is, this is on Kinterberg, right?
This is a grow, grow and processing facility.
Yeah, yeah. Back by the crouton. You get the crouton smell?
No, this was on the agenda in June twenty-sixth. And motion was made to continue. So...
June twenty-sixth?
They're asking for a, an extension to November thirteenth.
One sec. I don't think I was here.
So we did open or we didn't, we never?
We did open and...
We did open, so they just want to...
All right, I wasn't here. So you guys opened, I wasn't here.
I don't think I was either, actually. I think I was out of town.
I wasn't.
We opened it, we did nothing and they want more time to do more nothing. Make a motion, we approve.
And when do they want?
Make a motion, we all agree to do nothing.
November thirteenth.
Ooh, that's, that's a pretty big extension.
All right, so Jim, Jim made the motion to continue. Hold on one second, just, just one. Petition, let's write it down so we don't confuse. Petition twenty dash nineteen. And a motion by Jim to continue till November thirteen, two thousand nineteen. Do I have a second?
I have a question before it's second?
Yeah.
Is this an extension of time that we're going to sign so that we don't get into a constructive?
Right, right.
Grant.
Right. They'll give you an extension of the time for decision as well.
We're agreeing on it. I don't, if we didn't...
Granted the extension subject to them extending the time for us to make a decision.
Oh.
Okay.
We've already heard every, we haven't heard their presentation, right? So I don't think we would get ourselves into a constructive approval situation here.
I thought it was open, though.
If it was open, yeah. If you guys, I don't know, did you guys open the hearing?
No, and, and a, a special permit is, can they be extended as long as you want? It's just, you have to make a decision sixty-five days after closing the hearing.
So you have to open total line.
We have to open it to close it and it's sixty-five days after we close it. We're safe.
Okay, right. So the question is, was it open on the twenty-second, on, in June?
I believe it was.
Wow. Okay, so you need November to put you past the sixty-five days. So you're gonna need an extension from them, agreeing to give us extension on the decision.
I thought it was sixty-five days after we close.
After you close the hearing.
So you haven't closed it yet.
Right, but the law is clear as well. Special permit from the day they apply, you have ninety days total.
Okay.
Right, to open to close, right?
Yes, yes.
So ninety or a hundred? Hundred, ninety for a variance.
Hundred for variance, ninety for special permit.
Ninety total.
Yeah.
To open to close.
Well, you have sixty-five, then you have ninety days to open the hearing and, and make a decision.
Right, but regardless, that will put us past.
Past the time.
For everywhere you go around. So you need an extension for this.
But would that, does that apply where it's by consent, where, where they're the ones asking for the extension?
If we give it to them, they don't agree to the sentence, we bomb it.
I, I don't think a judge would, would say no.
Right, yeah.
We don't want to go to a judge. There's no sense.
Just extend under, under the condition that they agree to.
Give us an extension, end of story.
And doesn't a document have to be signed with the clerk?
Right.
And all that?
They have to sign a, an extension form.
For decision deadline.
For decision as well as the, the public hearing.
Okay, very well. So based on that, Jim made a motion, who second?
Second.
Second by gent, all in favor say aye.
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 Oppose, abstain. Okay, anything else, guys?
Yeah, there's this letter here. Probably Ken can, or the building inspector can deal with it. It came addressed to the clerk and I opened it up during the meeting. I gave it a brief read.
We all got one.
Oh, you all got one?
Yeah.
Okay.
I have no recollection. This, this really isn't a matter for us to handle.
What's that about?
She's asking, she's inquiring about a...
She's mad because the house is, is, it's still underneath the...
If she's got an issue with something is built, she needs to get representation.
Let me explain.
Let, let Ms. read it.
Wait, hold on, one second.
Let me explain.
One second, before you do, let's read it for the record. It's still public hearing.
All right, it's not a public hearing.
It's not. It's just, it's a member of the public.
Correspondent.
Right, we are on a public hearing, though.
Yeah, but...
I don't know what's about. Okay, you explain. How's that?
All right, back in April of, of two thousand eighteen, you approved a project with a, a development that increased the height of a building up to twenty-seven feet. of a building up to 27 feet, and you set a condition of 27 feet. When the architect, Bill Lockwood, had started to work on the plans, he realized that he'd have to go up to 28.5 feet. So, they asked for a minor modification. You granted it and gave him another couple of... Another foot and a half. The Butter is claiming that it is going above 28 and a half feet. What we've done is, I've asked the building commissioner to request from the engineer or the architect a calculation of the height of the building, so that we know whether or not the design meets the requirement of no more than 28 and a half feet. If it does, then the point is moot. If it doesn't, they'll have to come back to the board for a relief.
Major modification.
That's what it would be, yeah.
So, on that line, if the zoning allows for 35 feet by right, do we have the right to further restrict them?
Yes, you do.
Okay.
Because we granted the permit with just 27 feet.
Okay.
But if they come... I think the height restriction there is 35 feet, isn't it, in that area?
35 total, yeah.
Right. So, if they come back, it doesn't mean if they want 34, we don't give it or not give it. We don't know. But because the permit was granted with 27 feet, 28 and a half is no big deal, but more than that, it will need, I guess, a major modification. You don't agree?
Oh, I'm sorry, no, I was...
Shaking your head.
She was shaking it.
In a different conversation.
Yeah.
She was shaking it.
Sorry.
Okay, so, is it in the slope? Do you know?
Oh, yeah, it's very... It's steeply sloped.
Steep. So, the engineer will have to take an average, not the lower.
The building... The way the building code works for calculating height, you measure six feet off of the foundation and four points around the building. And average.
We talked about that last week.
Correct. So, I guess the engineer would...
So, then again, I'm just curious. You measure all four corners of the building, six feet off the foundation?
Six feet off the side of the foundation. You measure the elevation...
And then you measure the...
And the average, those four points.
So, if the ground is going away or going up...
It's gonna alter.
...the benefit of that grade, six feet away.
Right. Both ways.
Yeah, 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 yeah. So, you do all four sides, then you measure the height, and then you take the average of all four?
If the middle goes like that, it don't help. You need the end and the front. You got it? So, so, average of... All right. So, we'll wait to hear from them?
Yes.
All right, very well. So, do you need a motion or not?
No, don't.
Okay, good. Anything else, guys?
We got these technical forms here to be signed. I'm gonna pass them.
How'd they get... Oh, that's Sonia, right?
Sonia's, right, yes. She's trying to figure out what faces go with what names on the...
So, we're signing these? Jim, is that what you gave us for?
Yeah, they're in there.
Okay.
It's two different decisions.
And I just want to make a note about...
There's probably a third one that we're gonna need, too.
The...
Ken, do you have the third one?
The zoning bylaws? I misstated because it's...
Can I have that Manella file while you talk?
Yeah. About the nonconforming structures, I misstated one of the articles because these are not lining up with... I looked to the wrong section because I'm noticing on Article 13, the...
Start signing.
Yes, sir.
It's not correct how it's written and edited. There's some errors here. So, I read the wrong section because I went to the wrong... Did we know that?
What section are you in?
Article 13, zoning protection. I was trying to understand why it wasn't making sense to me. Because it said... Because I was reading an area that said other structures, other than a single-family or two-family dwelling, and I was thinking, "We're looking at a single-family dwelling. It's not an other structure." And then I started looking closer, and it's because it's in the wrong area.
So, what page of the zoning bylaws are you referring to?
104.
Page 104.
Microphone.
I'm getting closer to the mic. I'll blow your ears out in a minute. Okay, so I'm on page 104.
Okay, so if you look at... Oh, what copy is that? I'm looking at October 2018?
October 2018, yes.
Why does mine not look like yours? Oh, it's not exact, okay. But if you look here, 1340, we're in 1330, we're in 1340. If you go to 1350, which is what those nonconforming structures were referring to, and you read about the nonconformance, it's actually 1360 is what it starts with. And 1340 starts with 1351, 1352. It's not 1340.
In other words, you've... The book here has got a script... An error when they wrote it. They got 1350.
Yeah, it's... And it looks like it goes through the whole chapter.
Sonia, there's two more.
Of Article 13.
They're over there.
Oh, okay.
They got two, and we got two. I see what you did. Roofless efficiency.
No, no, he's...
I do see what you did.
We're signing...
I see what you're talking about. I think we're all... Everybody's a little distracted.
Everybody's signing so that there's nobody sitting idle.
So...
We're passing them around and making efficient use of our time. Thank you, Ken.
Thank you, Sonia, for running through the rain to get the decisions.
Thank you.
Alteration, extension, release, next is 1350. So, I think, Veronica, what you've noticed is, on page 104, where it says 1350 in bold, it should probably just say 1360.
Starting at 1340...
Yeah.
If there is no 1340 articles...
Yeah, it's really choppy. It needs... It had some reworking a couple of years ago.
Yes.
It needs more reworking.
Gotcha. That's why I was reading the wrong thing, and I'm saying, "That's not a separate structure." That's not an other structure, and then...
There are lots of issues.
Gotcha. So, I'll be more careful when I read this.
Veronica, you're in, Jim. There's one there Bob has to sign, not me.